This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board.
The Eau Claire Area School District presents the Eau Claire School Board 2018 Spring Election Forum.
This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the School Board Candidate Forum hosted by the Parent Advisory Committee along with North and Memorial's Student Councils. There will be seven candidates vying for four open seats on the April ballot. Six of the seven candidates running for the Eau Claire School Board are here tonight to answer questions which are important to parents and students in the school district. The candidates, in alphabetical order, starting on the far end of the stage are Lori Bika, Joshua Clements, Lori Klinghammer, Joe Luganbill, Tim Nordine, and Eric Torres. John Plewa, who is also a candidate, is not here tonight due to conflicting schedules. My name is Tom Giffey. I will be one of the moderators this evening. I am, I guess in my role here tonight, a member of the Parents Advisory Council, the parent of a first grader in the school district, and in my professional life, one of the editors of Volume One magazine. And to my left are...
Cassandra Cooper from the North High School Student Council.
Alyssa Slovjak from the Memorial Forensics Team.
Alyssa and Cassandra will be helping us ask questions, as will some members of the Parents Advisory Council. We will ask seven questions during this forum, and additional questions may be asked if time allows, so watch your clocks. Each candidate will have two and a half minutes to answer each question. For the first question, we will start with Lori Bika and proceed down the row toward our table until every candidate has answered the question. For the next question, we will start with Joshua Clements and then proceed around again. The remaining questions will continue in a similar manner. When you are called on to answer, please walk up to the lectern. The timer will start once you begin speaking. With 30 seconds remaining, one of the moderators will raise her hand. If your answer is not completed by two and a half minute mark, one of the moderators will cut you off. I thought we should have invited the pep band here to drown you out like they do at the Oscars, but unfortunately, maybe next time. Good luck to all of you, and we will begin the questions, as I said, with Lori Bika.
Please introduce yourself and your top priorities for the school district.
Hi, my name is Lori Bika. I was thinking about this actually when I provided the information for the short biography that you all distributed to folks who attended tonight. And so, I guess something of what I would say would repeat what you see there, that I think my role as a board member is to ensure that all children who attend public schools in our district have access to education that's inclusive, it's rigorous, and it's of the highest quality, and to recruit and retain the most talented group of professionals that are available anywhere to work with our children, and that all district employees have what they need to flourish in their respective positions. A priority of the highest level for me is to contribute to the long-term planning in support of the five areas of the district's strategic plan, contributing to a vision for the future of our district as one that leads the nation in student achievement and student growth and all-around student well-being. And I hope, if you've heard me speak at a board meeting, in a committee meeting, or in some other forum, that in some way I've focused on reliably a top commitment which is eliminating the achievement gap in Eau Claire schools. I believe our worth is ultimately going to be determined by how we serve our children who have not historically been served, especially students of color and students from low-income contexts.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. My name is Josh Clements. I'm a candidate for the school board. I have two parents, or two children here in the Eau Claire School District, a second grader at Lake Shore and a freshman at Memorial, and couldn't be two more different people. And I'm relatively new to Eau Claire, being here for a little over two years. And I'm running for school board because I think the schools are excellent, and I think there's just some ways we can take it up the next notch within the constraints that we are permitted within the state. And my comments were not as well-prepared as Dr. Bika's, unfortunately. So I think the areas that we most need to improve on is communication. So with two children in two different schools, it's very difficult to keep up even as a parent in the district, but we have many citizens throughout the district who don't have kids in school yet or no longer. And so, just being able to communicate what's going on with the school, when the events are, what our priorities are, the challenges we're facing as a district. Second would be to, within the flexibility we have, make sure every student is getting what they need to achieve. So that means that students who are arriving at school behind in their grade level have the resources they need to catch up and exceed standards. Those who are above and above the curve, as it were, to ensure that they have the resources to really flourish. So wherever a student is, there's no one-size-fits-all approach to education, and I think that is one thing that we need to try to break out of that shell that many public institutions have been into where we're producing kind of a same approach to everyone. And I think we need to be more flexible and thoughtful how we approach that. And I think third is, as growth is continuing across the region, we need to be proactive in thinking and working with the city and our other partners across the region to make sure that we're allocating resources where they're most needed, because resources are scarce. We have limited ability to raise resources the way that we'd like to. So how can we ensure that those scarce resources are being allocated where they're most needed?
Thank you. Lori Klinghammer, and I am a candidate for the school board. The priorities that I have are, and again, I'm not as well-prepared as Dr. Bika there or Mr. Clements, who clearly is more prepared than he thinks he is. The priorities that I would say for the school board and for my candidacy and for my work at the board would relate to just making sure that all students have the opportunities that we've experienced in this community. This community has provided a lot of opportunities for my family and positive experiences for my children. My children are now through the school district, and so I would like to see the experiences that they had continue forward. I think the board and the district has already established some really important goals, and they've done a lot of the hard work to put a plan in place and to address a lot of the needs of the community and the needs of the students. And they've worked really hard to build in equity and build in collaborative culture and build in ways for all students to succeed and achieve their goals. And so, my goal as a school board member would be to continue that good work and to continue the achievement goals that students have in place. Thank you.
Sorry about that. All right. Can everyone hear me? All right. Can you hear me now? Okay.
My name is Joe Luganbill, and I was elected to the school board in 2015, and I'm very proud to be running for reelection this year. To sum up really what my priorities are as a board member, it's for me all about expanding access and opportunity for all of our 11,300 students, no matter their background, no matter their specific needs, no matter their learning style. You know, for me, I'm very proud, over the past three years, of the work that we've been able to do on the board through our strategic plan, through our strategic priorities, through the goals that we've set, and also through the policies that we've crafted as a board. I serve as the Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee, and a lot of the changes that our committee has pushed through and that our board has supported and advocated for over the past three years have been very supportive of our students, students with special needs, students with various learning challenges, students of all backgrounds. Just recently, we're working on expanding our School Resource Officer policy and really updating what we're looking at doing with the scope of that policy. And why we're doing that collaboratively with the Police Department for the first time in over a decade is because we're focused as a board right now on equity for all students and on making sure that the folks in our schools are equipped with the tools that they need to best meet all kids. One of the other things that I've pushed for as a board member is more support for our special education programs. I currently serve as the School Board's Special Education Liaison, and a few years ago Lori Malnory and I got together and we put together some public sessions, meeting with parents, with students who have various special needs, whether it's a 504 plan or IEP. And I'm very happy to see what's kind of blossomed from that, which is a wonderful group of parents called the Special Education PTA. So there's a lot of great work going on, and I'd love to continue doing that work. It's really special to be here at North. As for me, my dad started teaching here at North High School the year before I was born, so I really kind of grew up in this school. And as the kid of a teacher in the district, this school district has always been my second family. So whether it's through this capacity or my other work in the community, I've been really proud to give back to Eau Claire, its schools, its kids, and its families. Thanks.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming. I'm Tim Nordine. See if that works here. My priorities for the school board are essentially the same as the priorities that I had when I was teaching in southeastern Iowa and when I was working on my PhD in education in New Jersey, and that's fighting for continued leaps forward in innovative programming. As a teacher, I had to fight against the school board in my district to bring in things like cross-curricular projects. I was teaching physics. I wanted to work with the English teacher. I had to temper a service learning project that would have brought our students into our community to partner with medical organizations, the main society, anything science-related, really. And I realized while I was doing that, that no matter how good I was as a teacher, rate me on a scale of one to 10, I was two or three points lower because of policies that were keeping our students from receiving the best education that they could get. That's what drove me to go to grad school and study policy. And I want to see our district continue to move forward with things like the Arctic Zone, the INTEC Grade at Sam Davey, these innovative programs that give students something new, something potentially better, and when they are shown to be doing better things for our students, that we push forward to try to expand them and expand the capacity we have in the district to lead new ideas forward. Also, when I was teaching, the district that I was in was something like 60 or 70 percent free and reduced lunch. We had a number of poor students. And our district was about 60 percent Latino, and I saw a lot of the issues of equity. And you've heard all of the candidates so far talk about how equity is a priority. And our district, when we moved here to Eau Claire from New Jersey, has really shown that they're making strides in continuing the fight for all students from special ed, students of color, low economic backgrounds. And I think one thing we need to continue working on is our gifted and talented education. But all students across the board need access to these good ideas. I'm really happy to have my wonderful wife, Terry, and my two sons, Harper, who's a seventh grader at South, and Enders, who's a fourth grader at Robbins, here today to hear about these things, because that's what I want for them and what I hope for, to keep moving this board and district forward for all students. Thank you.
Buenas noches. Good evening. My name is Eric Torres, and I am a professor of education at the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire. I have served in different capacities in the public education setting long enough to know that as a school board member, one's effectiveness can determine whether schools succeed or whether the obligation of the public is met. I know also that while members of the board help determine in which direction it goes, it is only up to the teachers to actually get us there. I define myself as a public educator, a teacher, and I know how motivated teachers look like. When I joined the Board of Education last year, my first challenge was to imagine a role that could match the energy and enthusiasm of those teachers in a significant way. In that sense, my priorities are oriented both towards students and also towards teachers. As an institution dedicated to learning, how does the Board of Education learn? This has been a guiding question for me as I participated in the board activities during the last few months after being honored with an appointment to serve a partial term. I have pondered over the possibility of running for office, and this is the reason why I am here. Public education leaders have to play a key role in understanding the issues that impact our societies at large, whether it be politics or economic development or climate and environmental impacts. We have to provide critical direction and early pathways to focus on those issues, and this has to do with curriculum. I am willing to offer my service to become a trusted source who moves and inspires teachers with innovative ideas to differentiate their instruction, one who encourages teachers to model for students how to learn engaging others to solve shared problems while developing agency. I can make sure that there is policy and supportive practices to turn those ideas into reality. I can contribute to eliminate structural barriers to replicate and scale their success into sustainable, equitable change in service of a democratic, diverse, and inclusive citizenry. I'd like to contribute to the creation of a foundation for others to build on and reinvigorate a movement for others to join, that of a school as a democratic experience, that of a shared aspirations and the common good.
Thank you. Our next question will come from Shannon Pinkert, who is the chairperson of the Parent Advisory Council. And we will begin with Mr. Clements.
Good evening. As a school board member, you have to confront many issues while being constrained by state mandates and funding. Given these issues and constraints, what would you need to learn to be an effective school board member for your term?
I think it's a very challenging question considering it's a moving target at the moment. I think what a school board member who is tasked with trying to set policy in order to really continue to grow into a 21st century learning and teaching institution is to understand what are our constraints and where are our flexibilities the best we can determine. And that means we have to look internally to our own staff, who are in part tasked with trying to keep up on what law allows and dictates, and also as board members to interact with other board members around the state to collectively troubleshoot, as it seems to be right now. What can we do and what's working, and how can we explore what are those evidence-based best practices that are out there, and how can we pursue those the best we can, knowing that we're not going to be able to do everything we want to do? And so, it's a difficult decision of a board member is to try to figure out, among those things we can do, how to go about doing that and allocate resources in such a way that we're making sure all of our critical programming is being met while trying to seek out those opportunities to improve.
Thank you for your question. Oh, I just got to get over here. Thank you for your question. As an attorney, I spend most of my professional working life dealing with the question of people with problems and how do we solve them within the constraints of the law? And I think that's a skill that's very translatable to the school board. It's a life skill in many ways. As Josh mentioned, we don't get everything, there's no way to make everyone happy to keep every, or to address every issue. We're going to have budget constraints. We're going to have constraints within the law. And as a professional, this is sort of the work that I do every day. So I hope that as a school board member, I can take those same skill sets and translate it into the work of the school board. I think there's a lot of good resources out there to help in that role. Certainly, there's the Wisconsin School Board Association that sets those standards for us. There's the National School Boards Association that sets those standards for us and helps provide guidelines for making those decisions. And so, as a school board member, that would be my goal, is to bring that same set of skills that I use every day in my work life to the work of the school board and to try to accommodate all students and to do the best we can for all students within those constraints and mandates that you've mentioned. Thank you.
Question, and it's perhaps one of the most important questions, if not the most important question. I think the most important thing first for school board members to be aware of, new or incumbent, is of our budget situation as a district. And that really means educating ourselves about what's happened with public school funding in this state since 1993, when the revenue caps were imposed by the legislature and governor at that time. And what's happened since then is school districts have had to do more with less all of these years. In our school district alone, up until 2008, we were forced to cut about, move this down a little bit, we were forced to cut about $30 million out of our school district operating budget over the course of several years due to our budgetary constraints. So it's very important for board members to know first and foremost about that situation and also what the solutions are to that. We've had, in Eau Claire, in the past few years, two successful referendum initiatives. In 2011, we had one that was successful, and I was very happy at that time. I was the student representative on the school board and helped push that referendum. And then in 2016, I helped found our other group to get that referendum passed in November of 2016 with 65 percent of the vote. So that's the other piece that is important for board members to know, is that the solution is not just on us. It's up to the community as well and voters. And also, the solution is on lawmakers, and that's why we've been pushing for reforms to the funding formula, because until we have systemic change in that area, like we've seen in other states recently, we're going to continue to have increased needs and a lack of resources. And of course, within the budget constraints that we have, as we make decisions each year with our operating budget, which is usually about $130 million, with what we do with those dollars, we need to match it to our priorities as a board. One of those is high-quality staff, always, always will be. We have 1,400 employees in our school district who make up the majority of our budget as a district, of course. The majority of our budget is people. And investing in our people is the most important thing we can do. When we've surveyed the community, students and parents alike say that the single most important thing that impacts their student's success is who's in that classroom. So of course, people first is the most important, I think, guidepost in your budget. But, and we've had, over the past several years, opportunities to invest in that. As a board, we passed a $3 million overhaul of our compensation plan for our employee groups, and we're continuing that work moving forward. And we have maintained a commitment as a board now that we're going to keep reviewing that and keep doing what we can to make sure that we're a competitive school district for all of our people and that we're meeting the needs of everyone in our schools.
Certainly, I think none of us would be here if we weren't committed to a lifelong pursuit of learning. And one of the most important lessons that I've pointed is how important the context of a given school and a given district is. So I think one of the things that I will be committed to learning, probably elected or not, is visiting each of the individual schools, talking with teachers, seeing how individual programs and ideas are working, and getting to know their specific circumstances. Because what works at Robbins may very well work at Locust Lane, but there might be factors that need to be tweaked, or teachers that need support at one or the other to really get it right for the students that are there. There's no one-shot solution to making our district better. It's going to take work on all kinds of different levels. So I'll be in schools. I'll be talking with teachers and administration. I'll also be working surely with the central office to see how that data is coming out, to look at where exactly are we on defeating the achievement gap or bringing it closer together? And since I learned that Commissioner Dux was retiring and decided to run for her seat, I've been attending all of the board meetings, and as Joe just mentioned, certainly the financial situation for the district is a learning point that board members and prospective board members need to focus on. Looking at ways to advocate for improving that situation, but knowing what we have to work with so that we can responsibly look at referendums and not overburden the public, and finding ways to use the money that we have to do the best that we can for all students.
Thank you for the question. I could speak long to it. I would say, first of all, that in times with limited budget, challenges arise, and we need to have very clear where our priorities are. Since the emphasis on standardized testing began, the role of the funding that comes from the federal government has shifted its direction. Now it's, you know, dedicated mostly for testing. That's the direction that we have now. So I see an interesting shift in the role that boards of education, local boards of education play, and that is making sure that equity happens, that is, that there is equal access to educational opportunities for all students. And I think that the funds that we have need to be invested, making sure that that happens. Through accommodations, through the implementation of innovative programs and strategies that help students learn, all of them, and not only achieve academically at acceptable levels or much more than acceptable levels, but making sure that everyone grows, which is not the same thing. Additionally, simultaneously, we need to make sure that there's adequate professional development, continuing professional development for our teachers, so they can continue to develop their understanding of what does it mean to be culturally relevant in the classroom and to be effective instructors that differentiate their strategies and their approaches to every single one of our students. If I were to summarize, those priorities would be pursuing excellence through equity.
So I've worked for about 18 years now as a university professor. I served as a department chair for a large unit for about six years, and I was elected member of the university senate. When I think about those experiences, I think they taught me a lot about areas like curriculum and assessment, student retention and graduation, budgeting, facilities, grant writing, collaboration with other with other units within the organization and within the community. So as I think about the question, for me, what I have been really working on and what I would need to learn that much more deeply is how to best listen to faculty and to staff and to students, how in this role to serve as an advocate. An advocate, this is the largest group of people that I have ever served. And recently, I was on a school visit in a small district, and the person who was leading the tour kept saying, "Well, you know, this is a very small town. We can do that here. You know, it's not Eau Claire." And that comes back to this question for me because, you know, we can be that small town. And so I think that's what I really need to learn is how can I contribute as a board member where everyone is heard, everyone is valued, and I get to stand side by side as we advance the district in the ways that the teachers and other staff and students know how to do.
What is your opinion on the current state of student safety? How would you work to increase the student's safety in schools?
Thank you for the question. Obviously, student safety is a top priority, not just for the school board members, but for the parents, for the teachers, for the community in general. I think a lot of what I would do as a school board member is defer to the experts that understand this, the law enforcement professionals, the safety professionals, the school liaison officers. I think anything that we can do to keep our students safe should be a goal that we would have and something that we would undertake. I'm not sure how you could argue anything other than putting the student's safety as a top priority. But again, I think there are experts in this area, and as a school board member, I would look to their guidance and their expertise and their recommendations to keep our students safe, both physically and emotionally.
I am not sure if this question would have come up two months ago. Maybe it would have, but I've seen just in the past few months that this has become a number-one campaign issue that I'm asked when I'm knocking on doors. And that's, of course, due to very high-profile events that have been occurring, not only in places like Parkland, but also here in Eau Claire. You know, we've seen a record number in the Chippewa Valley of school threats that are taking place. So this is something that's very important for the school board and administration and others to take on. I think the most important thing is to first realize that it's not simply the school board that is the solution. It's other actors in the community. It's law enforcement, it is parents, it is students, it is staff. It's very important that we use a very collaborative approach to student safety. Of course, as a school board, our purview is policy, governance, and budget. So in terms of budget, what we can make sure we have in our schools is making sure that we are investing in school safety initiatives, whether that's in our facilities, like secure entrance protocols and programs. We have this every summer now, for the next several summers, we have secure entrance and other security upgrades and overhauls that are going to be underway in many of our schools to make sure that they're all updated. And that's actually largely in part thanks to the voters of the referendum. That's where those dollars have come from. But other pieces in our budget that we can make sure we're adequately supporting school safety is making sure that there is an adequate level of support services in our schools to help facilitate a safe and supportive learning environment for all students. That's making sure that we have adequate services when it comes to counseling, mental health, nursing services, social work services. We currently have six, I believe, staff people who are assigned as nurses in our school district, for example. And in a school of 11,300 people, that's asking a lot of six people. We, just last night at our board meeting, we had a very, very healthy and very lengthy discussion about school safety and a letter that we're drafting as a board, and how we just finished last night, that talks about various ways that we, as a district, can facilitate safe schools and invest in that. Of course, the other end of things is advocating for changes in legislation. And one example that directly impacts schools is there used to be a provision in state law called the School Safety Revenue Limit Exemption, which provided for school districts to increase their level as a district, to allocate funds towards school safety initiatives, whether that's increased security, increased support services for students. Really, what it required was that a school would compile a safety plan, which we, of course, have.
Thank you, if you could.
Thank you. I'll wrap it up and just say that be watching for a letter from the Board of School Safety because it says a lot more.
I think, like Lori and Joe said, there are no easy solutions going forward. I know I feel safe with my kids in our schools as they are right now, but we have an obligation to continue to review policies and interact with those who are experts into what is most effective without compromising the feeling of community that our schools provide. Financially, of course, we need to find ways to support that, and as Joe was talking about, we need to advocate for a concerted effort between our community here in Eau Claire, the state government in Madison, and the federal government in Washington to make sure that we're working on multiple levels. We can't do it alone, but we can't rely on the state or Washington to make us safer on their own either. Ultimately, for me, I think one of the things that builds a safe community is community. It's teachers knowing their students. It's students knowing students. It's the support team, the counselors, the support staff, the SROs that are in our schools creating relationships with others. When students get left behind, that's when we see potentially scary things happen, and we need to bond together to do that. The school I taught at was very small. There was 250 students in the whole high school. So I had students three years, and I could get to know them individually and follow them. And that's a real challenge when we talk about these larger high schools, Memorial and North. How do we have teachers form real relationships? I think that's where some opportunities for some of these innovative programs that will allow students more contact with teachers and adults that care about them comes into play. But even in the traditional program, community will help us to build safety.
This is a very important question and issue, and it's really hard to respond to it in the first place. I would say that investment in infrastructure is important, and we understand that as a board. So we have a plan to continue improving the facilities in terms of physical safety. We have also been working on the renewal and the clarification of the role of the School Resource Officer in our buildings and trying to understand that he's not a disciplinarian, but an additional resource that helps us understand the reach of law and also to develop relations with the community. A third idea related to school safety would be to understand or to remind us that we need to understand school as a democratic experience and what does that mean through our curriculum and throughout all our activities day-to-day in the school buildings. We need to leave a culture of respect and affirmation amongst all the members of that community, but not only those inside the building, but also beyond the walls of the school building. And finally, we need to advocate as a community for legislative action to bring more accountability and a sense of security for all citizens in regards to gun violence.
I'll speak from the perspective of research findings, as other people have already... Folks have mentioned that the district, we already have in place all of the safety procedures that are now considered standard for schools. Secure entrances, availability of school resource officers, a long-term relationship with the Eau Claire Police Department. And all these measures have their value, but they alone cannot ultimately ensure school safety, and schools alone also cannot provide solutions. Research demonstrates that efforts that are designed to strengthen children and families and communities are what prevent violence. So early intervention, nutrition, parenting skills, healthcare, educational resources in the home, mental health services, social support services, religious and spiritual supports, youth organizations, whatever families need to flourish and flourish early on. In the schools, as other people have mentioned, guidance counselors, supporting our school-based mental health, family liaisons, extracurricular opportunities led by caring and knowledgeable adults. This is what research shows preserve school safety and prevents school violence. Zero-tolerance style environments have not produced in terms of making schools safe, quite the contrary. Instead, schools that can create a community where all children are valued and cared for, where nonviolence, dignity, respect, and anti-racism are core values. So safety, school safety is, of course, it's part of a larger system of violence in the United States that others have spoken to, and districts can and should and support and even lead efforts that may change locally, regionally, and nationally.
So I think we've heard some really great responses to this question. So I don't know if I can say anything specifically that wasn't already answered, but you take the knowledge that our board is committed to looking for evidence-based strategies to address this challenge and recognize that we can only control a discrete number of things, and many of the changes that need to happen are working with partners throughout the entire community to try to build a cohesive culture of supporting one another so that there aren't outliers and people aren't falling through the cracks and people feel like they're comfortable and empowered to be in school. You know, talk about, that's probably elsewhere, but hardening schools and things like that is just kind of going the wrong direction. Our schools are the center of our community where our students spend the most time outside of the home and honestly, spend the most time awake throughout their childhood, so hopefully awake at least. So, you know, I think this is a place where people want to feel comfortable and that even if you're not a student, you may not travel through school or by the school on a regular basis, but it is the center of our neighborhoods, and it really needs to be a safe place. And while we do need to make sure there are those security measures in place to avoid the catastrophic situations that aggressively we can, really, it's those soft programs, the skills, the people that we need to empower, need to put in place so that we are trying to ensure that we are a place where people feel comfortable and safe and model that behavior.
Thank you for the next question. We'll begin with Mr. Bogan Bill. And the question will come from Jenna Gillis Turner, a member of the Parent Advisory Council.
Good evening. My question is in regards to the district's two charter schools, the Chippewa Valley Montessori at the elementary level and McKinley Charter School at the secondary level. The school board has been considering alternative programming options for families, including the Little Red Nature Campus at the middle school level and the Spanish Dual Immersion Program at the elementary level. There has been an increased demand for this type of programming. Please share your views on these alternative programs. Thank you.
It's a great question, and it's a very important issue in our district. I think that we've heard in surveys time and time again that parents want choice. And of course, choice can be a very positive thing within the public system. I'm a very strong supporter of our public charter schools in Eau Claire. We have, and we don't just have the two public charter schools, the Chippewa Valley Montessori and McKinley, we also have a number of other innovative programs. I was happy to be on the board when we authored and passed our first charter choice and innovation policy, which has since been changed to be called Learning Environments and Partnership Policy. Through that committee and through the innovation of our staff, we've seen so many wonderful programs popping up in our schools that provide alternative pathways for students to be successful and to learn in the way that they learn best. Having been directly in all of these various programs, it's been wonderful to see that learning in action and that innovation in action. And we even have some programs that are not technically innovation zones, but they truly are innovative. And we have innovation in every classroom in our schools every day. But one program right here at North High School, HOPE Program, is an amazing program that they have here, working with students, and they do a lot with credit recovery and helping students learn at their own pace. And really, as we talked about before, having those opportunities for that relationship with an instructor, it's crucial for a lot of students. So, yeah, I strongly support that. And moving forward, I'm very glad that we have the Learning Environments and Partnership Committee because that work will continue to challenge the board, to ask that question, what can we do to provide more opportunities for innovation? I benefited from an innovative program in middle school called the Half Moon Lake Project, which was a cross-curricular program offered to students at the Long Middle School in the sixth grade, and we were doing art, writing, music, science, mathematics, all at Half Moon Lake. It was an amazing innovative program, and I would love to see more programs like that.
You've already heard me talk a lot tonight about innovation and how I'm excited about innovative programs being a part of Eau Claire. And in short, both of these programs really excite me as well. As a science teacher at the Little Red Nature School, the opportunity for kids to be able to get more exposure to science, it really gets me excited. That was the sort of way that I was taught to teach by my mentor at Iowa State, Mike Cluff, who actually used to teach at Memorial back before he became a professor. And being a teacher that worked in a highly Latino school, Spanish-language version, is another thing that hits very close to my heart. These are both programs that I would be excited to work to find ways to make happen in the district and other programs like it. And the simple fact is, it's not just something that I like. It's not something that I just want because I think it's needs or my personal experiences lead that way. These things are all backed up by decades of research that show that they benefit students. Students who learn multiple languages succeed more in school. Students who are able to be in a smaller learning environment where they build those relationships see more success. These are the sorts of things that get me excited, were some of the reasons I thought I want to get on board with the school district and be on the school board so that I can continue to push for these things going forward. These are things that we need and things that we need to find ways to continue to move forward.
Thank you for the question. I think you need to cut me because I get really passionate about alternative programs, I have been lucky these past few months to be part of the governing board of the Montessori School. And one thing that fascinates and inspires me is listening to the teachers that are part of the board, community members, speak with so much pride about the things that they want to accomplish. And it reminds me that when we have motivated teachers and community members supporting an educational program, then that's... an educational program, then that's the key to success. I'm also lucky to be part of the committee that is bouncing up ideas about the Dual Immersion Program. I do believe that the earlier we begin with foreign language education, the better the results are. Waiting to the seventh grade is just too late. A child before eight years old can learn as many as eight different languages at the same time. So we're missing that opportunity. But I think that these alternative educational opportunities need to be strategic. That is, they need to be designed to solve a particular problem or a problematic situation. They must be data-driven. There must be some sense of accountability. That is, must have clear goals and measurable objectives for academic achievement and growth over time. They must be led by teachers, motivated teachers, who are really involved with students and their realities. Must also clearly identify the structural flexibilities that they need, and they must identify the alternative structure that they want to design.
When my older son was of age to enter elementary school, I was living in Fall, we were living in Fall Creek at the time, and I chose to open and enroll in the Eau Claire Area School District with the hope of attending Montessori Charter School. And that's where he enrolled, and my younger son attended there as well. There's a committee in the district, Learning Environments and Partnerships Committee, are known as LEED. And I had spoken as a member of the board in favor of elevating the work of LEED. This is the committee that the Arctic Film and North Star Innovation Zones, current and future, funnel through this committee. And I've spoken of my belief in elevating the work of LEED as something of a meta-goal for the district so that all schools have the opportunity to feature what we're currently calling these innovation zones as a signature feature of the Eau Claire Area School District as part of our long-term strategic planning efforts and our vision for the future of Hope Care Schools. That said, if you have heard me speak, you know I'm going to be skeptical about many things and try to use evidence-based decision-making. So to echo what some of the other speakers have said, you know, the purpose, structure, and effectiveness of charter schools can vary dramatically from one design to the other. And some designs definitely offer approaches whose success can be transferred to public schools in a more general sense. But I do believe that there's some essential criteria for Eau Claire, for charter school effectiveness. And these are principles that you're going to hopefully hear me stand by as I make decisions about charter schools and new programs. So first, a charter school has to be able to provide equal access to high-quality education for all children in the district. It must be held accountable to the same standards or transparency as traditional public schools. So disaggregated enrollment and academic performance data have to be available so that district staff and parents and other interested parties can evaluate the school's success in educating its students. And in all cases, charter schools must aim at improving learning for educationally disadvantaged students. And I hope that in all the decision-making, that you can see that I'm guided by those principles.
This is another area we're very passionate. As we've heard, there's a lot of different opportunities out there. Not all of them will fit with what we need to do in Eau Claire. It needs to be based on a program that's been tested and evaluated. We use the word innovation, that doesn't necessarily mean something that's never been tried. It just means that it's new here. And I think that while we do have some latitude to experiment, we're obligated to make sure that we're providing programs that are well-funded and are based on sound social science research. And then we continue to evaluate those programs in terms of where our students are showing the best growth. In my introductory comments, I mentioned trying to achieve an environment where programs are available to meet students wherever they're at. So if they're kind or ahead, they're different styles of learning, that somewhat corresponds to making sure we have a variety of programs that are available, both within the same school and if we have a more focused school environment such as the Montessori method. Previous to, here in Eau Claire, I lived in the city of Dubuque, Iowa for a number of years, and they have a very strong private school system there. In part because they are doing some of those things that the public schools are not doing, such as language immersion programs. And speaking to other parents, that was their decision point. That was a program that they desired to have their students, and that they made the decisions based on that. I'm not saying that that criteria alone is worth making that decision, but we want to make sure that the public schools have those programs and the latitude of programs that allow parents to have that flexibility of choice. And, you know, there is benefit to having a small district, but there's also benefits to having a large district. And one of those is having economies of scale that were to provide parents those choices across the district and within some larger schools. Also, while I was in Dubuque, I was the president of the Montessori School. It's been around since the 1970s as a 501(c)(3), taking kids aged two through kindergarten. And it's, you know, it works for many students, it's not going to work for everyone, but it's one of those project-based opportunities where students can seek out the topics that they're most interested in. My daughter's been on the waiting list for Chippewa Valley Montessori for a number of years. And so just looking at that, you know, the waiting list is there, there's evidence that there's demand. And so one of my priorities as a school board member would be to evaluate whether that's something we can do and should do, and also to continue to integrate some of these programs that are working throughout the district.
Great, great question, and thank you. As a fourth grade, a former fourth grade teacher, you, I quickly became aware that it's one of those things that when I was going through my master's degree, getting my master's degree in education, that was the time when Howard Gardner was doing the seven different learning styles, and that was a big popular theory. And so there was a lot of research behind the different learning styles that students have. And so immediately when you're in a classroom, you realize that that's very true, and there's probably more than seven. So the idea behind that students have different ways of learning and we should provide as many opportunities as we can for them is, of course, research-based, and it's also anecdotally-based. And your first year of teaching is a good backup to that. That said, I also support Lori's views up here that charter schools are great and the ideas behind them are great, and we should always be looking for innovative ways to teach our students and to move them forward. But they also have to be based in the ideas of the goals of the school board and the standards that the school board have set and the district have set for educating kids in terms of equity and equal access. And are we servicing the largest number of students in the best possible way? And so answering the questions of charter schools and innovative questions, I would always be using that framework to answer that question. Is this something that the district can do, aligning with its goals, staying within the parameters it's set to move the district forward? And also, are we servicing children in the best possible way we can with the budget constraints that we have? So I think every charter school needs to be viewed, or proposed charter school or proposed program like that needs to be viewed through that lens.
Thank you.
How do you plan to include student voices in the school board's decision-making process?
Thank you, that's a great question. I think we've seen in the past few weeks that student voices are powerful and are important levers not only within a home community, but across the nation. I'm aware that there are a couple of student protests being planned here in the district. I'm excited to see our students exercising their voices. Eric talked earlier about the democratic responsibilities of public schools. This is one of them. Encouraging our students to have a voice, supporting them where we can, and listening to what they have to say. As I said earlier, I tend to be learning more about school context, and that includes talking with students, hearing their voices. I was just engaged out front with one of the freshmen and sophomores here in the show choir, who've had a lot of suggestions for me, both in terms of performance, so you haven't seen my hands in my pockets yet, I hope, as well as substantive things for the district moving forward. As a high school teacher, I learned how seriously our students can take thoughts. Sometimes we tend to think, oh, well, teenagers are wild, they don't want to be involved seriously, but I've not found that to be the case. So I intend to continue interacting with students across the district, hearing what they have to say, inviting them to share their thoughts at meetings and personally. And of course, we already on the board have student members from each of the high schools who, as I've watched the board proceedings since my candidacy announced, have performed admirably, and I've been really impressed with them as well.
As a classroom teacher, one of the things that motivates me and keeps me coming back to the classroom, be it K-12 or college level, is the excitement with which students share their voices. And more than that, the excitement that they demonstrate when they notice the difference between having to say something and having something to say. For me, that ability to recognize that they have something to say is a very important element in the formative process of all students. Voices in the classroom and voices in the building. I think that student representation in a council is very important, and we need to provide more opportunities for that structure and those voices to be included in more decision-making processes that concern to their own education. But also voices in the classroom. We, I particularly think that we need to move towards experiences in the classroom that nurture and get enriched by students' voices being shared, which means also preventing those mechanisms through which we silenced their voices. It is important also from the school administration that there is frequent practice to regularly survey students' expectations and opinions about the day-to-day life in school. This is very important for the formation of their agency as individuals and also for the affirmation of their autonomy as citizens in a democratic society.
I've always collaborated with students pretty much in all aspects of my professional life. Most of my time is spent working as a researcher, and I really don't engage in any research that isn't student-faculty collaborative research. Students are involved in every aspect of the project, and it's student-led to whatever extent possible. Students fully inform the research process for me. I have always, as a faculty member, as a department chair, and now as a board member, have experienced committees in which students are members, encouraging their very active participation. When I was a department chair, I worked with a student advisory group, both in the department and in the college. Currently, I have begun and am looking forward to some collaborative work, kind of collaborating with or maybe assisting is a better way that I think about it. Our two student representatives on the school board with their investigations of factors associated with preparedness for or success with advanced placement testing. And as we've been, as the board has been working on a new handbook for board members and developing that handbook, I made the recommendation we have that our two student representatives, could the student voice be expanded to include representation from McKinley? Or how would student voices from the three middle schools be represented through board representation? And so I think, I don't know what life is like without collaborating, partnering with students, and I think the best moments for me is when I get to step aside and they lead.
As a community planner, community engagement is the foundation of how you do your work. And when you're talking about schools, no one knows what's going on in the schools as well as the students in many ways because they're the ones experiencing it and living it. And ultimately, as a school district, enriching the students is what we're about. So we need to know what's going on in the school district, how they're perceiving school climate, how they're perceiving safety, their eyes and ears, they're going to see things, they learn things that are going on that is, as adults, whether you're a teacher and especially as a school board person not immersed in it on a daily basis, they're going to see things that we're not going to know. So I think it's crucial to find out how can we best engage with students. And I think, you know, surveys are a useful tool, but they're insufficient to really get to, you know, pass some of these binary answers. How do we really garner some wisdom from students? And as Tim mentioned, sometimes just chatting them up in the hallway. You may be hosting a lunch, and everyone knows that students are burdened with enough things that they have to do, enough boxes to check during the day. The last thing we need to do is add another box for a meeting with a school board member during the day. However, I think there are opportunities for board members and others to get engaged with students in an authentic way so that they know their voices are heard and so that we can really best understand how they're experiencing the school climate. And then we can balance the input with what we're hearing from teachers and what we're hearing from administrators and what other resources we have available to try to make decisions. But really, students are aware of that, they're experiencing the classrooms in a very authentic way, and we need to be very proactive and responsive in any way that we can to best understand how we can, from a policy and budget perspective, make sure we're being very responsive to creating an environment where students can thrive.
As a parent of a teenager who's about to graduate from high school and move on with his life, and parents out there also know, teenagers certainly have a voice, students certainly have a voice. Sometimes they don't, and sometimes the challenge is getting them to talk to you and getting them to engage and say that, well, I find they sort of go back and forth between wanting to tell you everything and wanting to tell you nothing. And so I think it's a double-sided coin when we talk about student voice. Certainly, students have their own culture and their own communication with each other, and that's changing very rapidly. So sometimes as adults and in the professional world, we have a hard time tapping into what their world is and what their ways of communicating are because they seem so far removed from where we were as kids. I think that's an important thing, though, to try to get at for them. One of the, or the district's strategic plan involves this collaborative culture and this supporting their social and emotional growth and encouraging their academic achievement in any way we can. So I think the challenge for us as parents, as school board members, as staff, is always trying to, as just getting that authentic voice from them and getting them to communicate with them in whatever fashion they choose to communicate with us. And I think that's a challenge that we face, not just as school board members, but as adults, particularly in with this latest round of events that have been going on. And I think it's important to continue to listen to them and take their And I think it's important to continue to listen to them and take their role seriously and in any fashion that we can make that work.
So I'll start by saying I have three younger siblings, two are still in the district. My little brother Zach is in eighth grade at DeLonge, and my little sister Jenna is a senior at LeMora. And they live about 10 miles away from me, and they have my text number. So I have a built-in student voice in that way about a variety of issues. But I truly believe in our school district that students are here not just to be passive recipients in their education, but active participants in their education. It's a very important distinction, and not all school districts make it. Here in Eau Claire, though, I'm very proud that we have, through a variety of ways, one is the involvement of students coming to us and having a voice at the table. The student representatives to the school board is one wonderful example. But also, we've had students at the table during our strategic planning committee. And more recently, we had a subcommittee put together to develop some plans moving forward with our academic recognition system committee. And I was told, and I won't say they told me, but I was told that the students were by far the most engaged members of that committee over everyone else there. So that's saying something. But another recent example is we just developed a subcommittee to look at our student policies regarding sexual harassment, which is, of course, a very timely issue in this country. But it's important for local governments and schools to look at it, too. And that's another way that we'll be involving students. But it's not just important for them to come to us, it's important for us to go to them. And something that I'm very proud of through my board service is that I've done over 200 visits to different schools in our district, all levels. I try to know who our teachers are, and what I've really enjoyed is, whether it's elementary kids, middle school kids, high school students, a lot of them know who I am now, when I'm in the building, or when they see me out in the community. And that's huge, because they feel comfortable to let me know about things or send me an email. I have, there are some special education students in Project Search at Mayo. Always get a big hug whenever I go to the doctor. It's been really wonderful to have that student voice and that student connection, because I would argue that they are our most important stakeholders and deserve that powerful voice forever in our district's operations.
Our next question comes from Brooke Berg, a member of the Parent Advisory Council.
Good evening. So my question has two parts, and I will try to speak as clearly as I can so you can get both of those. How do you assess the district's support for students of differing backgrounds, including LGBTQ, students of color, socioeconomic status, and immigrants? And then what actions would you take to ensure the success of all students?
All action to address the issues that you just have mentioned that are very important issues for us come from a very simple rule of policy. That is, we are obligated to create equal educational opportunities for all students. And we read that in terms of equality, but most of all, we read that in terms of equity. That is, some students will need more than others or less than others, depending on their concrete situation. And that is the guiding principle. In a world that is changing at such fast pace, differences in terms of social issues or cultural issues or racial issues or linguistic issues or sexual preferential issues can cause great turmoil and hurt people. I think that when we create learning environments that are not just tolerant, tolerant is not enough, when we create learning environments that are affirming and modeling for instance how to stand in solidarity with others, then we're moving forward in the right proportion. The district has initiated last year an intensive program to develop sensitivities for educational leaders, for teachers, so that they can initiate the process and continue with the process of identifying their own biases and be more sensitive to the diversity represented in their classrooms and create learning strategies that are responsive to that cultural difference. So I think that the district is moving forward in the right direction. We need more of that, and resources need to be allocated to continue that process.
So something that was mentioned earlier on in the initial questions just from this evening, that every candidate had something to say about equity, or something to say about equity, diversity, inclusion. And I think I've been involved with the board just since June, but that has been my experience in that context as well. So you asked about what is the current level of support for the board. I think in every conversation, in every issue that we've examined, attention comes back to equity, diversity, and inclusivity. So I think from examples of recruiting and retaining diverse staff, talking about eliminating the achievement gap, always coming back and asking for disaggregated data when you want to look. And I understand that that is a relatively, kind of a newer approach in the district, but if you're looking at honors or AP, High Ability Special Education, standardized testing, always coming back and looking at performance for the groups that matter. So I think the level of support is solid. I think that it has a way to go, a ways to go, as is the case in many districts. So for the second part of your question, ensuring success of all students, as something that I said earlier, our worth is ultimately going to be determined by how we serve our children who have not been served historically. And so I think how do you ensure success is a top priority for Eau Claire schools. Eliminate the achievement gap in every area, and that's a number-one focus. And the idea of recruiting and retaining for diversity in staff, in committee members, in every facet of what we do as a district.
So like many of the issues, I think this is one of continuing excellence. This is something you can't just say anything, done, and move on. This is something that has to be a priority and can remain a priority. And as Dr. Torres mentioned, this is about equity, it's our mission. It's not only just what we're remaining to do, it really is our mission and to foster diversity inclusion. But this is a moving target, and this is something we have to continue to monitor. And as far as I can say as a board candidate, is I hear the right things publicly, for the most part, I hear the right things from the school board and candidates. But I'm a young white male, and so, you know, I'm honestly ignorant to many of the challenges that there are. And so this is something where I, there's always a gap for my education, I'm never going to be an expert, this is an area where you do continuous learning. But to have the mindset that we are going to be equitable, there's no compromise in that, and that we're going to be proactively affirmative, and there's no compromise in that either, but we need to continuously be mindful of this. And so as a policy and resource allocation perspective, we need to make sure that we are allocating the time and effort to stay informed, to listen to students, you know, what are the issues that you're experiencing? I'm not, we're not going to know what all those issues are unless we really hear from the students as to what their experiences are. It's one thing to see someone who appears to be showing indicators of feeling left out or feeling left behind, but there may be people who are feeling that on the inside and are just not expressing it. So we need to know where these are, and then make sure that our staff have the resources they need in terms of continuing education, they may be having specialized resources where they're needed, so that everyone has what they need, so that they're included and that they're getting their educational needs met. And as many of the challenges are, students are coming to school with all the stressors that they have in their life, and we're kind of responding, we're receiving the students who are coming in, and we're trying to, you know, deal with the multiple challenges and how can we help them for the time that we have them? And then empower them to let their, when they're outside of the classroom, to the best we can, that they're well-equipped.
In my professional life, I deal with a lot of diversity in the community in terms of my client base. I also serve on the Eau Claire Housing Authority, is the chairperson of that board, and we deal with many diversity issues, including just different issues of poverty and population and lots of challenges there. I think the challenges that I've experienced in my professional life and also in my role on the Housing Authority are similar to what the challenges are for the school board and for the community as a whole. Every community has growing pains, and I think these are some of the ones that we face right now. How do you deal with these issues of diversity and equity? And I think that one of the real, real research-based solutions to this is that issue of closing the achievement gap for students. It's been shown that that is one of the primary things that will affect these diversity issues. So as a school board member, that would be my focus when it comes to the diversity questions, is applying that same sort of decision-making process that I've used at the Housing Authority and in my personal life, or in my professional life, to the district. And just focusing on the goals that the district has set for closing those gaps and the standards that they have in place and implementing those for students. Thank you.
The first word that is used in the Wisconsin Constitution to describe public schools is fair. Fair and appropriate public education. So it isn't just an idea or a concept that we believe, it's a mandate in our constitution. It's the bedrock, and it's the core principle that governs public schools as the great equalizer for all children in Eau Claire and across Wisconsin. And in my tenure on the school board, I think that what I fought for can be described in one sentence, and that is access and opportunity for all students. And that A-L-L is capitalized, because all means all. And some ways that we've done that as a school board in recent years, one of the first things that I pushed for as a school board member, that I got some heat for in the community, was a small change that made a big impact, which was to add gender identity and gender expression to our equal educational opportunities policy. When I first brought it up in the board office, I had to define some of the issues to some of the folks around the table, and that's how we started that conversation. And it was a year-long process, and it was a really meaningful process for all of us, but very difficult. And for me, having an LGBT-inclusive policy to protect all students was paramount to ensure the success of all kids. We've pushed for other things as well, whether it's having immigrant-inclusive language, regardless of immigration status, partnering with immigration groups in the Chippewa Valley. We currently have some disproportionality issues to deal with in the school district with regards to our students who are African-American, and we're dealing with that right now, looking at what do we need to do, possibly establishing another equity committee to look at that topic. But the bottom line is, it's the most important thing, ways of working to do is making sure there's a leveling field for all kids. Another area that we've worked on that is with our discipline policy, which we rewrote last year, to make it more supportive for families and to really have that focus on positive behavior interventions and supports. And that is something that's very important for all of our students, but particularly for the students of color who were disproportionately impacted by some of those programs. So the bottom line is, it's not just a buzzword that we use in our district, it's the core principle of why we have public schools, to be the great equalizer and to provide those opportunities for all kids. And if you reelect me, you can be darn sure that I'll keep fighting for that.
Two years before our oldest son started elementary in New Jersey, the school that both of my sons started at was named the most diverse school in New Jersey, and New Jersey is the most diverse state in the country. And to be frank with you, when we decided to move to Eau Claire, I was worried about what it would be like to move from a place where my kids were interacting with people of all colors, all religions, so many cultures across the world, to a place with growing, but much less, diversity. I was worried, and I shared that with my wife, I shared that with my friend Sarah, who also has moved here from New Jersey, and we talked a lot about it. And I was excited, on landing here, I guess, to find a community that, within the school board, within the district, embraces the diversity that we have, that celebrates it, that's put in place classes that honor the diversity among our student body and the people that are here. And I look forward to the opportunity to continue to push that forward, to be aware of the diversity that we have here, to continue to grow it, and to continue to work for all students, moving forward to have access, like Joe was saying. I hope you're as excited as I am, that no one up here has anything but the highest level of commitment to moving equity forward in our district. That's exciting to me, and I look forward to hopefully joining three of these other people as a board member in the spring to continue to do that. But one thing that I'll add is that we, the way that we can, one way that we can help to close those achievement gaps and to create access is to make sure that we're looking at the data that we have from our various programs, not only scores, grades, or achievement, but also the way that people are signing up for programs. Many of our special innovative programs essentially happen by lottery, as is required for some of these programs. So while we can't control the roll of the dice or the name out of the hat in terms of who gets in, we can be looking at who's applying and making sure that that also is a picture of the student population that we have. And if it's missing, if we're not getting people from lower socioeconomic backgrounds or students of color or even LGBTQ issues when we can find that data, that we're working to say, how can we improve that? How can we make sure that the application to these programs reflects our district, even when we have to, by chance, allow students in?
Thank you. And since we've moved on to question number seven, we'll start again with Lori Vika.
The school board's strategic plan focuses on several priority areas, including social and emotional growth. Issues of school-based mental health, school start times, recess time, and length of lunch shifts have been discussed by past school boards. What would be your focus for this area?
Could we ask, would you repeat the question? Do you mind?
The school board's strategic plan focuses on several priority areas, including social The school board's strategic plan focuses on several priority areas, including social and emotional growth. Issues of school-based mental health, school start times, recess time, and the length of lunches have been discussed by past school boards. What would be your focus for this area?
That is a very complex question. I, I, for me as a developmental psychologist, socio-emotional growth is somewhat inextricably intertwined with mental health and focused on school-based mental health. From what I'm learning in my limited time in the school board, perhaps the biggest need right now, given where we are nationally, is attention to socio-emotional growth. So this is something that schools are working, it's a, it's a complex and difficult picture from the perspective of research findings, because it's, it's difficult to know exactly how to operationally define it for our students, and it's even more difficult to know how to measure it. And I think what I'm learning is that people at all levels, from the district office, school administrators, teachers, know that socio-emotional development is a, is a really key aspect of educating the whole child and caring for the whole child. But there's a, there's a ways to go, set an understanding how it, how it operates in, in our classrooms and other experiences, and we said it, what is the, what's an appropriate assessment piece? And so from what I see, that really rises to the top as probably one of the main, main initiatives moving forward, forward for the school board, whoever serves, is bringing that piece into place. Again, from the strategic plan, it's, it's educating, educating the whole child, and that seems to be the biggest gap right now, as I understand both the state of the district and the state of the literature.
Thank you for your question. A very complicated one. So I think that it's, trying to best understand what, what does the literature say on these issues in terms of school start time or how we can attempt to meet the very broad diversity of student needs that are not just sitting and taking a standardized test, which is an imperfect measure to be sure, but how do we measure a student's wellbeing and how we, how we measure their, their psychological condition, how they're feeling, are they feeling safe, are they feeling valued? And are we meeting those needs? And hate to, hate to come down to resources, but we need to figure out how can we ensure that we have those resources that are being allocated, because we cannot expect teachers to take on yet another very complicated task of trying to be both their teacher and their, and their psychologist and their social worker and, you know, all the other things. But it's, it's difficult when we, when we have rising class sizes at the same time we're trying to, you know, address some of these other support services with really specialized and talented staff. So that, that's a question that the board is going to have to continue to wrestle with is how can we allocate the resources and what are, you know, what, where is our best, what's our best foot forward in terms of where do we, where do we go first and how can we allocate these resources that are most needed? In terms of school start time, I can say with kids in school, it's a challenge. Again, budgetarily, the longer the school day, the bigger the budget impacts. But my daughter comes home with half her cold lunch most of the time because she's, just says, Daddy, I don't have time to eat it. You know, that's, that's a big deal when you're, when you're seven or eight years old and you're trying to stuff food in your face as fast as possible and, you know, you have student, your friends on all sides. So I think that's a real challenge, is that, you know, we're, we're cutting recesses and lunches are short and, you know, students don't have that social engagement time that kind of, you know, it's not really downtime. Students are active, they're social during those periods of time, and those are really, really needed. How can we, you know, set the priorities in place so that we have, students have that time, that classroom time in an environment where we're getting measured by classroom hours and we're getting measured by standardized tests? So it's a, it's a very complicated environment. We need to figure, figure out how we can allocate the resources where they best are and, and listening to students to get their perspectives as to, are you too rushed during lunch? Do you need more time for this or do you need more resource in this other way?
I think every educator, every teacher who's been in a classroom recognizes the importance of the social and emotional health of a child and their overall academic achievement. And I think any educator would tell you that unless a child has that stability or a reasonable amount of that stability, they don't learn in the classroom, and that achievement gap just gets wider and wider. What child can focus on their spelling words of what they're concerned about is, is the, the situation at home or the fight they just have with their friend or whatever's going on in the spectrum of their emotional life. The educator would also tell you, as Lori, as an educator, has said that that's a very hard thing to measure, it's a very hard thing to get at. And for a school board member addressing those issues, I think we have to be open to any, any research-based, any sort of change, any sort of program that will help students and support them in their emotional life, in their social life, in building that, because there's, there's no way that we get to raising their academic achievement, which is another part of the school district's strategic plan. You don't, you don't build that part of it, you don't close those achievement gaps unless you've got students who are also socially and emotionally supported. So the, but as a school board member, I think we need to go back to the people that are doing the research, that are finding ways to support this and to address these needs for students, and then do what we can to implement these programs.
For anyone who's been to a school board meeting in the past year, two years, three years, social and emotional development comes up in almost every meeting. It's a, it's a very big priority for us, the district. I would also argue that we need to increasingly make it a big priority for our community at large. You know, I would say as, as far as some of our specific programs, whether they impact recess or the schedule of the day or the start times, that's something that the board has always been willing to look at those things. And one of the upcoming issues that we're taking up in the Policy and Governance Committee, which I chair, is we're going to be talking about play-based learning. And that really gets at, okay, what are our students and especially the early, early grades of our school district? What are they receiving in terms of instruction? How does it fit with providing opportunities for imaginative play? Because as my roommate, Mr. Rogers, would say, play is the work of childhood. And that's true. Play is the work of childhood, and it's very important that we, as a school district, facilitate those opportunities for healthy development for children early on. And it's also important for us to know that as a school district, we don't exist in a vacuum when it comes to solving the challenges of what can we do to provide healthy opportunities for youth. So one group that I work with is the Eau Claire Coalition for Youth, which I currently coordinate, and I also sit on the Education Advisory Committee for United Way. And that committee, over the past several years, has supported a number of tremendous organizations in the Chippewa Valley that support the healthy development of youth. We talk about mental health, and we have school-based mental health programs here, which are very important and thankfully are getting increased investment from the state. But it's also important to talk about the mental health picture in the whole Chippewa Valley and how that relates to our kids and families. The Chippewa Valley, Eau Claire County, and other partners received a substantial Mental Health Matters grant, and there are a number of other initiatives going on regarding mental health and healthy development of children. And the school board, not necessarily just the school board, but other school district administrators have a seat at those tables. So it's a big picture, but it's, it's kind of like that saying, how do you eat an elephant one bite at a time? And that's what we're doing.
I think every teacher gets into teaching at least somewhat so that they can interact with and know students, build those relationships. And I think in terms of social and emotional health, that's where we need to go to understand specifically what the needs are in a given school or a given classroom. We need to talk with teachers, let them know what it is that they're seeing, and then work as a board to try to address those issues, going back to research literature, trying to prioritize funding, trying to not overburden teachers, but allow them to make those connections. It certainly is a complex issue for which there's not going to be just one solution. We additionally need to continue to work to engage parents and families. We're not in this alone. We have to work together. We can't solve every problem within the six to eight hours of the school day. We need to be working with families when we can, providing them with resources to help facilitate healthy growth at home. And we need to continue to partner with the community to do that, to really make our schools community schools. We do a great job of partnering, we do a great job of bringing that in, and we need to push that forward. It's not going to solve every problem, but it's our duty to continue to care for each student individually, to know them and to try to provide for them when we can.
One of the reasons why student health seems to be a complicated issue is because we tend or try to understand it separate from the learning environment or separate from or different from the teaching and learning situation. I have eight ideas that I'd like to share with you about that and to prove that they are the same. The first one, I think teachers and staff need to be ready and able to identify as early as possible those signs of depression, for example, which seems to be a situation that is growing in our midst, even at early ages, so that they can be referred to the professional and solved as soon as possible through professional intervention. Another element is trauma recognition. There are some situations that students bring into the classroom that not necessarily are originated in the classroom, and yet they are manifested in the classroom, and teachers are not recognizing those signs. Teachers need to be able to identify those trauma signals and strategize so those students not only learn, but also develop a healthy appreciation of the self. I am a strong supporter of learning through play. We are not using enough time to continue exploring in freedom and self-guided way learning strategies that incorporate not just fun, but engaging activities that are conducive to learning. There is an issue related to student health that is related to medication and self-medication. We need to pay attention to those two cut there.
Thank you. Well, we've reached the end of our regular question period. So thank you all for coming to this evening's forum, and I think we should give all of our candidates a round of applause. And that was for yourselves too, for being so attentive. Please join us in the comments for refreshments and a chance to interact with the candidates. I'm sure many of them have words to add to what they've already said tonight. And remember to vote in the election on Tuesday, April 3rd. Have a good evening.
This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board.
The Eau Claire Area School District presents the Eau Claire School Board 2018 Spring Election Forum.
Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.